Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, next up, new business personnel issues, labor negotiations. Okay, discussion review, possible action application.
Let me, let me for discussion, so I could, I'm gonna, Lynn, you with me? Okay, can you hear me without, want me to turn this on? Can you hear me? Lynn, we'll let people know that we're doing it. Look, for discussion, I would like to move that we, we adopt, uh, the application for amendment to the zoning map ordinance that has been reviewed by solicitor and planner. Uh, I think Lynn took the initiative, but then passed it along, and it's been, it's been reworked, and, and, and we have it in front of us, so my motion is to adopt this application. No second?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. May I, please, since I made the motion, Jim?
I'm sorry.
Jim, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this, uh, application that you reviewed, could you
Correct.
Just speak to the council to indicate that you found it to be an appropriate approach?
I did, I did find that, Cal, I looked at, um, Ashley, Lynn, and I all, all tried to put together an application that we could use in cases where there's either a zoning text amendment or a zoning map amendment. It distinguishes, uh, it requires the applicant to state what their interest is essentially, whether or not there are specific parcels and like, hopefully this will help sort out some of the issues that you're seeing in, uh, the hearing like we had this evening. Because quite frankly, when that one came through, there was no such application that could be used.
Well, Jim, if I could, I know there was no application, and remember, and I know you've addressed it here, uh, one of the concerns was on application fee, so that it could work through the process
Right.
Uh, with the planning board, and so I indicate, or I see that, that this, uh, draft, or, or, I guess we call it a draft here at this point, does call for a $500 application fee when they, when someone starts the process. Did you, did you, was that something Ashley had passed?
That, that was something that Ashley came up with based upon her review of other communities and what they do, and I believe she took a middle-of-the-road position on that, at least that was her indication to Lynn and I, that this appeared to be, uh, not near as expensive as certain other communities, but also not as cheap as the lowest. And it did seem to cover most of the administrative costs that are usually anticipated in these things, so it was, it was an attempt to find something that was reasonably and reali- reasonably realistic, and, uh, and also, uh, not taking advantage of applications for profit type motives, but simply to cover costs as best as you could predict.
Right. And I, I recall seeing something that she passed along, which she, I think, indicated several communities
Exactly.
And what their fee structure was.
That's correct.
And it appears that she's taken a middle-of-the-roads, uh... And, and, and the reason I think that that makes sense is because coming forward, well, and this is an exception in a way, what we're, what we're going through right now with redevelopment, but, but people could come forward, uh, for any number of reasons, uh, which could be a bit foolish, I suppose. Well, and we had that communication that's been pulled from, from tonight's meeting. You, you recall the one I'm speaking about, when Cox had come forward, but now it's indicated they're not gonna pursue it.
Yeah.
Others, others of the same ilk, similarly, could come forward, so for me, it makes sense.
Who seconded that motion?
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any discussion down there, Frank, or Ray?
There was a second. You, you made the second.
Right.
You guys all set with it, or?
No, I'm all set with it.
I think we should move forward.
Okay, uh, I'll call a vote on it, all in favor? Approving this proposed, uh, application for amendment to zoning net ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, Department of Public Works request to extend bid chip seal. Uh, Ray, he, he's not here, did he give you any information?
He, he said he submitted a letter recommending extension.
They were keeping, maintaining their prices, yeah.
We have it, yeah.
Was that tonight?
Yes, yeah. Uh, well, Ray, make a motion for a second, I have the letter, we can, I can read this. Do you have it in front of you now? Maybe you do. I have it here. Do you wanna make a motion and go ahead with that, Ray? I will. Well, I, I move that we, uh, honor the request of the, uh, Director Public Works, that we extend the competitive bid with New England asphalt, uh, that will now run through, uh, July 1st, 2019, based on the fact that they are quoting us the same price per square yard as they offered to us last year, which, I guess, given the cost of, well, I'll say enough, but, uh, there's my motion.
I'll second.
So, I, I would say, and you, you, you would speak to this better than I, but it seems with the increasing cost of fuel slash oil, that keeping the price the same is probably a pretty good thing, I would guess. So, I think we should move on that one.
You have a motion, a second?
Please, more, second, I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, Department of Public Works request to proceed to bid crack seal.
Yeah, he had said that, the past bid has run its three years, new bid is required.
Uh, the crack sealers? Okay.
Yeah, we need a motion.
We take a motion, Ray?
Go ahead, Cal.
Well, Ray, it should have been, you're the liaison. But, well, if you wish, um, there's been a request to proceed to bid for crack seal, a request made by, um, Director Matchcheck, and, uh, these are the specs, if I understand correctly, that will be put out for bid, correct Lynn, what we have in front of us?
Yes.
Yes, second. Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Department of Public Works request to extend bid or proceed to bid asphalt.
Aye.
I'll speak to that, uh, as you said, Cal, with the price of oil, I would say to extend that bid right now, because you're gonna get a higher price, but, uh, I'll put in my motion to extend the bid to Cardi for, provided it's based on last year's bid and abides by all stipulations from last year's bid award.
Yes, I recall you heard some.
Yeah. Need a second.
Well, I'll second.
Any discussion?
And you requested some
Like last year.
Specifications, from the, I mean, you, we got that.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, yeah. Introduction, consideration, possible action, resolution, and opposition to governor's fiscal year 2019 budget request, Article 1 dash quasi-public reserve transfer to Section 15 dash 16, Article 10 quasi-dash public reserve transfer, Section 5 dash 9. And I'm assuming that is the scooping problem that the Raimondo administration has, which drove up the price of your garbage last year, and she's also doing it at the airport corporation, and where was the other one I heard she was trying to do it? Turnpike Authority.
Really?
Yeah. I was talking to Alan Raimondo, he'd added $280,000 to their tipping fees last year, when they raised the tipping fees on garbage, and she's taking, she took $6 million last year out of that.
But, yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to approve the discussion, this resolution.
Second. It was a second.
Yeah, because when I read it, when I read it carefully, and you, you may, you know about this apparently already, six, $6 million being, uh, transferred from Resource Recovery Corporation for a deficit reduction, $3 million for the next fiscal year, and $3 million for the year after that, and then the tipping fee, as you said, Ray, is increasing.
Which is last year, it's a hidden tax.
It, it's, that's
For, um, uh, you, go ahead, Cal.
No, I'm just, it's the frustration, I guess, we have, I have, with the whole
Tipping fees for private individuals across the scale path, the, uh, Johnson landfill or the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, it has increased to forty percent, forty-seven
Forty-seven.
As of 1 July. So, when you, when you drive over the scale now, with a low, it's a $35 minimum, $32 goes to state, $3 goes to the town of Johnson, what they're doing now with the increase on 1 July, it's gonna be $58 scale, not, it's a huge jump, it's $35, so everything's going up, all of your hazardous waste, your mattresses, that you drop off, all, all fees are going up at the landfill. A little public information.
So you got a motion and a second?
We do.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion?
No.
Is that gonna have an effect on the, the cost of the transfers to, if you're interested in next year, too? So they went from 75 to 150, and next year they're gonna be even more money?
Right? You're gonna plant July a little bit, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but not 47 percent.
Yeah. We'll have to get the cost, Russ.
It says 47 percent over two years, and then here it says, uh, cities and towns will have an increase of 4.1 million, exodus fee will increase by approximately 19, almost $20,000. We have to cover that. And by the way, by the way, we noticed in our communication that Foster and Charlestown also adopted this same resolution, specific to their communities, I wouldn't be surprised if others didn't do it as well. Put a try.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
G, introduction, consideration, possible action, resolution, and support of regional school district finance committee, you're up, Frank.
Well, based on, uh, the visit that I made to West Greenwich Town Council, they have full support of it in our discussion of last month's council meeting, I suggest we draft this resolution and send a copy to West Greenwich, send a copy to the school committee, and move forward with, uh, the discussions.
That's a motion?
Yes.
That's okay.
I'll, I'll second.
Do you got a motion and a second?
I think we do. Call a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, H, consideration and possible action, reschedule July 2nd regular meeting to July 9th. Thank you, Lynn, you were reading my mind.
Move, move to reschedule the meeting, next month to July 9th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unfinished business, historic preservation, historic cemetery's.
Nothing new.
Impact fee study, awarding a bid.
Right. Um, I was tasked with contacting the proposed vendor, they only responded to the RFP, and I did, so I, you have a memo from me
Mm-hmm.
About my conversations with, uh, Mr. Weiss, and also, um, part of that was to contact Middletown, about their recommendations for them, and they had nothing, but, um, two things to say about, and they used them twice, um, just to let you know, Middletown wasn't in a position that they had to return funds, um, a few years ago, and it certainly wasn't a very nice process to, uh, develop, so, um, what would happen, and I'm recommending is that you make a term of award, the name out not to exceed the 38,400, um, then Mr. Weiss will come down and meet the council, and what they do is they go through each area of the proposed plan, and where we're gonna collect fees from, or for, and price it out based on each area, so if we do one, we'll just take, if we do five, we'll take five. But what's interesting is that he's gonna do a little education about impact fees, um, talk about maybe some communities seem to pick as part of goal, and they have 10 projects to do now at once, after 10 years, you either have to build that project, or you have to return all money. So, it's put the limits of
Cautious, we need to be cautious. Vice, Vice is the gentleman from the company that, that's, that's respire, that responded, and thank you for your, your media discussion with the Middletown, was it plan, no, town manager, planner, Middletown planner. I, I appreciate your recommendation, Ken, thank you for your diligence. Who wants to make?
Go for it, Cal.
I don't have to. I'm gonna move that we, that we award, um, to, to, Tischler, uh, Weiss, um,
They get technical awards.
A ten, uh, tentative, Tim, sorry, tentative award, not to exceed $38,400 for work identifying response to the RFP, et cetera, regarding, uh, impact fee study.
Second.
And then a question for you, uh, they had to give back money, I'm assuming that's before they used the services of this company?
Yes.
So, now, they're hoping that with the services of this company, they'll be in a better position?
Right, and then, um, what Mr. Weiss stated was that this began a relationship with it, because it seems like, it's apparent that they're one of the few
True.
In the country that are doing it anymore, that, um, by statute, you have to update, uh, review, uh, plan every year, our fee schedule.
We have
So maybe he will.
Good. Let's move quickly.
And plus, this isn't a capital program, they have $40,000 in there, um, so there's money to, hopefully
Good, good.
And we'll save some, but
Good, thank, thanks, Ken.
And thank, thank you for the email you sent over.
Okay. Maybe a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next up, C, introduction, consideration, possible action, and ordinance regulating certain secondary agricultural uses and activities. So on hold, Jim?
On hold. Table for now.
D, information technology services. Any update, Frank?
Uh, Ken and I discussed that it would probably be proper to wait till after the financial town meeting, when the amount appropriate in the line item of the budget for consulting is approved, and then we can move forward from there.
Okay.
So, continue to
Yes.
Continue to next month.
July 9th.
Uh, B, introduction, consideration, possible action, proposed amendments, Exeter Code Ordinance, Appendix X, Zoning, Article 6, Renewable Energy, Section 11, Point 1, Solar. Well, seeing as we had to continue tonight's public hearing to next one, and there was still at least an hour and a half of names on that piece of paper, I think we should just keep this on the agenda for next one, because I'm a bit, could pinch it for next one.
Well, I think you're right, Dan, that we can't do two at once, but I, I, I don't, I don't wanna lose sight of this, because I, I, you know, I, I think they're, they're on a, a good track, I really do think that.
The other thing is, we, you'll have to see if we can get this room for next month
To I 9.
To be safe.
To I 9. To, uh, continue
Yeah, to I 9, correct, yeah.
We'll continue this to next month's meeting.
Yeah, leave it on that, okay.
So, you're not gonna vote on that?
No, not tonight, man, that's the thing, uh...
Because we didn't finish the public hearing tonight, there was at least an hour and a half of people that had signed up testimony, it, to try and do two public hearings like this in one night, we'll never be able to finish it.
You're putting it to the same meeting?
Excuse me?
Are you putting this one to the same meeting?
No, we're, we're, we're gonna leave this on the agenda till next month, we're not gonna move it forward for a public hearing next month, because we still have to finish the one that we started tonight, to try and do two public hearings like this in one night, we'll never get it done, you know?
Are you concerned that you're not gonna be able to get all the names on those lists?
No, we, the, the list, the signup sheet we had, there was still quite a few people to speak.
But if we do a mailing for next time as well, then you're gonna get that many more people, so how are you gonna get all those people to speak in one meeting?
If we were to do two?
No, just, just long.
Uh, the way our, the, the council policy, the bylaws are, we, at 11 o'clock, we shut down, and, yeah, so...
Okay.
It's, it's, like, we, there was still quite a few people from tonight's public hearing, to try and schedule this one, too, it'd be impossible to get all our business done in one night.
How about L?
How about item L, same thing?
Exactly.
Item L on the agenda, is, is that the same thing as the earlier agenda item?
That, that's the same, that's the same, uh,
That's the same one that we heard.
That's for us.
What we do is, we leave it on the agenda, because of the open, uh, records laws, open meetings laws, if, if that wasn't on there, and they didn't have a, but we couldn't talk about it, so...
I have a question. If there is a, a draft of a new ordinance for solar, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we move to hear this versus, which could impact L?
Because the first one has been in the pipeline since February.
So if you, if you do ultimately adopt what's in E, does that, will that override what you do if you did accept L?
If we did accept L, it would become the law, if the, and so they would be able to operate.
So E is a mute point, or whatever one.
So E would be a mute point for those 15 parcels of land that they're trying to get?
Assuming that it was amended, if it was amended out, when new ordinance came in, and there were no applications in the meantime, it, the new app, the new ordinance would take effect, so it's a hard question to really answer, it depends upon what several people do
Mm-hmm.
And what this town council does, and the timing of it, so it's hard to really answer that, it's not, I can't really do it, not knowing exactly what the timing would be, unfortunately.
May I make a comment, please? We, we also have the advertising, um, provision for, for any ordinance of this type, so we don't have time now at this point to put it out. Honestly, honestly, I wish we could, but, and it, the way I see it, is that for those special 15 parcels, that, that's covered under what we heard tonight, I would hope the rest of the town would be covered by a new ordinance. I'm sorry, it's like this.
All the work the planning board did.
I, I, I understand, I'm very supportive of solar aid, I'm calling it draft aid. I, I don't know what else to do tonight, because we
So if you hear the people speaking, like, you, you listen to it today, at 11 o'clock, you might not have a chance to vote on it next meeting?
The way, the way our bylaws are, 11 o'clock, we, we
Then it, it gets carried out
And we, we schedule, we can schedule a meeting for the next night
Right.
The next week, we have to do it before the next monthly meeting.
Oh, so you have to just hurry them up, then, in other words?
The, the way it's set up, like, if we had to call tonight's meeting, it's a Monday, yeah, Monday nights at the town hall are reserved for this town council, so, it's always that building's always reserved for that reason, so...
Would you still hear the people that didn't speak, though?
Excuse me?
Would you still listen to the people that didn't speak at the previous meeting?
Well, we, we, we saved the list, and I marked the ones which already spoke, so...
And they can come on the Monday meeting?
Yeah, yes, so, okay, we, we gotta move on, we're gonna get to Bush here.
Okay, uh, transfer station status?
Uh, I followed up, I just to let you know, in terms of, uh, the negotiations, I followed up with Mr. Cooper, and he ended, he told me that, uh, there would, there would be a written response coming, um, I haven't received that yet, but that was a, I called him just the other day, because he had not responded to my
Right.
Good night, to our, uh, written communication, our previous one, so, I called him, he said it was in the works, and he was gonna get something to me shortly. That was just, uh, Friday, I believe, that I spoke with him. No.
Uh, G, permit program, cat readers, Rhode Island general law, captive for, Section 4 dash 24 dash 4, breeding permits.
You received, I, first draft, and, um, explained on the front that what we have here are really two things going on, we're gonna have to just reschedule, we're gonna go forward with this, and that includes to, um, charge $100 for intact cats, and then also, um, annual breeding permit, $100 per cat. And both sections are in here, collect breed cats, um, is what the original set was, but there's also, right next to that, you know, Rhode Island laws, spaying and neutering cats, so it makes sense to include it, and I talked to Steve, and asked him if he was going to offer any suggestions for, um, amending the fee schedule, and he said he was thinking about it, and would like to get with, uh, Dean, to get back to us, but this could be scheduled for a public hearing. Everybody's okay? So, if the community's okay with it, it could be scheduled for a public hearing, or just let it sit?
Let it sit for a month. We don't need another public hearing about
We don't know what's gonna happen with this. But Steve's gonna come back anyways, with the, um, updated fee schedule, amended fee schedule, so, I think there was a question about that in the
Okay.
Will you just continue this under unfinished business?
Continue.
We can add that one in. Uh, the next one, H, regional school district finance committee, saying things, Frank?
Yes.
Okay.
But, oh, but, it needs to progress, it might not be as
Yes.
Okay.
So, should we, we, we wanna keep it, no, we better keep it in case we have to
Yeah, because I have a feeling that profitable in the future year, with West Greenwich and all that, this is a school, so...
Next, uh, town of Exeter sexual harassment policy.
So, we have a copy of that, it's like this, uh, this was the model from the trust, but, um, even when Jim was reading it, it looked like the last of the color one we have from 1998 is also from the trust, the same language, format, it clues a little bit more. Um, so we just took this one, put it in our format, made some changes to find who this is applicable to, if you notice that?
Very good.
Big section, section, I think that makes it applicable to anybody within the town, is on the scope, page two, um, so any one town personnel is defined as really any agent of the town, anybody associated with the town. So, Jim, you have?
Yeah, no, we worked on that for a while, um, I had done one, my own version, but, and Ken had come up with this one, um, Ken's was perfectly fine, I just had a couple of tweaks to it, including the, uh, a couple of suggestions, including the broadening of the language to, uh, include all functionaries in the town.
This is your version?
Is it? Okay, well, needless to say, at the very end, we all agreed that it was a good version.
So, if you vote to adopt, it'll be, um, assigned?
It doesn't, it doesn't require a hearing, just
Doesn't require a hearing, and then it'll be interviewed, there's some, some notes in here, I don't know how it's supposed to be displayed by certain people, but also there's a distribution memo we throw on top of policies, and it's, and it also says that the managers or partners are responsible for notifying the staff of this policy or any of the policy.
Is there a signature page again, that's gonna need, I'm gonna need to get from everybody?
No.
No.
No, not this time?
No, there's a distribution that requires, you don't need to get
So, how do boards get it? You gotta go to the chairs of the boards?
Well, if it's in here, it'll be posted in every facility, it'll be posted at the library, it'll be posted at the town hall, at the animal shelter, and at the garage.
How many employees do we have, total?
Forty-two.
Barely twenty.
Posted? The only one, we've been, um...
The department heads are supposed to give to the employees? But what about apartment, um, board chairs, they, they should be given.
Mail them, use them, just buy their packets.
Chairs and packets, and boards.
Just please distribute, that's all.
That was an issue last time.
Yeah, the reason we did it that way last time, as you know, is because there was an exigent situation and we wanted to make sure that everybody understood that there was a policy, it had not been, uh, had not, apparently not been posted in the past. We didn't want anyone to misunderstand.
Want a motion, Dan?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to, uh, block the revised sexual harassment policy.
Second. Just thanks, Ken, for putting some effort here. I, as I read it, it looked very comprehensive, and to address exactly what you've got.
Yep, unless it's coming, it's good.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Gargoyle Road issue, you hear anything, Ray?
Yes, if there's nothing new, the drain needs to be installed during the dry season.
What people problem? Yep. Okay, uh, K, April communication number one, statewide online permitting participation agreement. What are we gonna do with that, Frank?
Well, I. Go ahead.
Don't know, you say what you wanna say.
So, I thought that it would be proper, and I'm glad that everything in the council agreed, we moved to the work session last Thursday. Uh, the concerns that I had, that I had heard from two other municipalities, my answer, especially when I asked the question about if an application was to be filled out online and it was submitted, and it wasn't filled out correctly, of the missing fields, would cause a clog in the pipeline of applications. And the answer that I got was, there's an asterisk next to each section that's mandated to be filled out, and a draft could be saved once a user ID and password. That one, that was my main concern. So, I'm fine with it, it's just a matter of whether or not the council wants to move forward with it or delay it and take it on down the line. I mean, I think that, uh, building inspectors' comments were valid, that we shouldn't necessarily adopt it unless we absolutely have to. Because of the size of our town, is relatively small, and inspectors are in session every Wednesday night. I think that if it's not broken, why are we gonna fix it?
So you meant, you meant what the spokesperson asked you, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And she answered all of our questions to my satisfaction, so it's just a matter of whether the council still wants to move forward with it because of the fact that, you know, we're not a, I mean, she said that there was twenty-two municipalities, isn't that correct, Maria?
Yes.
Twenty-two municipalities that have already signed on?
Yes.
And they're trying to get it, so all thirty-nine have signed on.
But not required.
But not required, and, to Calvin's point, he asked if it would be mandated, and the woman who's running the program, even though she wasn't the initial person to implement the program, said that at this point in time, it's not, it's not in the foreseeable future. So, you know, unfortunately, we're at the discretion of who's in leadership or who's in the executive branch of government as to whether it's gonna be mandated or not. My opinion is, like I said before, it seems to be working, we, the way we have our process now, seems to be working okay. And because the eight thousand dollars at the last budget work session, we adopted it only out of caution. Personally, my opinion is, if it's not broken, we'll fix it.
Can I say something too? Because today, I happened to be in the, in the planning office and knowing we were gonna talk about this tonight. I said to Lori, Lori, what do you think about this thing?
Yeah, I had, I had the same discussion with her and Maria, and she said she saw the pros and cons.
Right, but, but she also said that from her perspective, she thought it would be helpful when people call her and she could look and know what the status was.
Right.
And, and so I said, well, but wait a minute, if these guys sit together, like, she spoke about one of the inspectors just uses a notebook. So I said, well, what if when they get together on Wednesday night, they see the status of any app and add to it in a tablet, which not necessarily all of them might have, or some device, and all that gets entered once a week when they're all together, at least, you, you know, there's something there? So she, she thought, in my discussion with her, it wouldn't be a bad idea, but, I mean, do you hear otherwise, uh, any of you? Or, I mean, what she, well, the other thing she said was the amount of money paid for the program currently used, which I don't know what that is, and I didn't ask her, this would actually be a better investment than whatever program. But I just expect the time to get into it, so, I, I, it's up to you, but.
I can understand the benefit of having accessible electronics, so anybody can look at it and see where the status of an application is. I can see that as a pro.
Cause she gets, and, and she's there, as you know, so she'll get calls, was the this done, or was that, you know, was the, whatever, close inspections? Now, now she can say, oh, no, it wasn't done yet, or, oh, yes, it was, this will be from contractors.
Right.
As we hear, these are the one, these are the fellows and the women that make the program, will affect most.
When I met, when I met, Lori actually came to the top of the stage and heard Maria and I talking about it. And she said, can I put in my two cents with it? And I said, and I said, absolutely.
Yeah, what was it you said?
So she, 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 she said, one of the common frustrations from contractors are, oh, you're not electronic and online. So I said, okay. So I said, would that make your job easier? And she said, to a certain extent, it would, yes.
And then I had said to her, well, can you, can you do what you gotta do to make sure it's properly functioning? She said, yes, but Ron came up here earlier, I, I don't know if you noticed, and he thought, well, from when he first arrived tonight, I said, well, Ron, we, we talked about, I knew it was on the agenda, I thought that's why he was here. And he wasn't there, he missed the Thursday night, he's gotta, he was confused.
Right.
He should've been there, but he didn't, but, uh.
Well, we invited all the inspectors, I figured they couldn't make it.
Well, he, he kinda, whatever. So I said, well, well, what do you think about this? Do you think it's gonna be too complex? She said, I said, can you all get together on Wednesday night, whatever, whatever needs to be in the system? He said, he said, yeah, he said, that's no problem, so, that was his answer to me, I'm not trying to push it. I'm trying to, you know what I'm saying? I'm trying to say, is that what you'd like, if you want us to back off? He didn't say that.
Right, I understand.
So I, I, I don't know. I recommend we do go forward.
Okay.
I mean.
I'm relatively ambivalent, it's just that that eight thousand dollars at the last minute, I think, concerned Maria, concerned myself.
The extra cost that may occur.
Right. But I, I mean, I am worried about down the line, if they mandate, now we gotta come up with more than eight thousand.
Well, I mean, if you don't, I, I, I think we should try it, but then. No, don't, give us a recommendation. No, look, see, so, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna.
Dan, if you do, Dan, if you don't.
All right, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we proceed with the online permitting process.
Okay, second.
Do we need any more discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, okay. M, purchase a new patrol vehicle, Sco, come on up.
Whoa, I need import.
No comment.
I'd already talked to Richard.
Yeah.
Have we specked anything out yet?
He told me to wash my hands of it.
So he's gonna speck it out, or do we speck it out?
If Dan and I left you, Sco, and I thought you and Richard were on board, you thought it was a good idea.
He, the next day, he, he wasn't on board at all, he says, I don't want nothing to do with it.
So we, we have to speck it out ourselves? Okay, well, I guess we'll be specking out the vehicle, so, okay.
Yep.
He, he says to me, he, he just didn't like the idea of it.
Okay, so we'll have to speck our vehicle. Request for summer hours, town clerk's office building. Anything else, Liz?
No, um, you're waiting for Steve to come up with, um, something that would work for all of his departments, too, but I guess he hasn't given us his, he wasn't here to give us his thing tonight.
Okay.
So.
I'm talking on my phone.
Oh. Uh, number eleven, reports of officers.
So, do you wanna continue with that?
I wish we, please, continue.
Okay.
Okay, reports of officers.
Hold, hold on one second, Dan. So if we continue this, we're gonna be into the, into the month of July, and the summer hours are supposed to be applicable in those two months. I thought that, what we discussed the last time, we would have a resolution as of this meeting. So we, we don't have one? Meanwhile. So the summer hours will be, if approved, from what, fifteenth till August thirty-first?
Six weeks, five days.
I'm not supposed to anything, seven's better than nothing.
Yeah, leave it on there, we'll continue it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Ray, ABC. ABC's doing well.
ABC, sweeping is eleven A, sweeping will be completed soon, a bit of a stop raining. Catch basement cleaning is fifty percent completed. We're working together with the town and National Grid, and we're moving five dangerous trees next week. And as far as B and C, everything's running smoothly. I went to the transfer station on Sunday, on Saturday, everything seemed to go quite well. And then I went to the animal shelter on Sunday morning, and it was quite well, less cats, less, less dogs, and everything's been going fine, and there's some volunteers and they are getting to speak to and thank them, so, everything's running good. That's my reports.
All right, D, tax collector's office liaison report.
So you all received, uh, Kim's notice with regards to collections for the month of May, one million three hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred seventy dollars and seven cents. Uh, there were two properties left on the tax sale list, both properties sold on May eighteenth. And after one tax, that one property was redeemed. And then there's also a paragraph that I don't have to read, all of them are short, where they're about to deploy the tax blocks being removed. Uh, I did not have an opportunity, however, I did want to, but I will have a full report throughout through ads, where we are with the DMV on the night of July, as far as, hopefully, we're close to getting online with that. Uh, I have nothing to specifically report with regards to the school district, it was mentioned by you earlier, Dan, about the graduation.
Tax assistance office liaison.
Yeah, just, yeah, please, just please read her, uh, to report, because she seems to be moving right ahead with some capable assistants, prepare a toboggan this way, since she was out for vacation. But just, if you notice, Vision, Urban Solutions, came in A and trained both Jeanette and, and Carrie on, they were computer, computer assisted mass appraisal, so, uh, trying to keep my tech open. Did you notice, get a chance to read how the values are changing, if you already know that, I mean, I mean, it's now gonna be a two thousand dollar, uh, minimum exemption amount, so I guess if the vehicle is valued, it's nice to do it. Lost a hook, that's the way I read it. And, and if it's fifteen years or older, no taxable value.
Jeanette survived.
I, 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 I'm supposed to be there, I know, on Friday for an update, so I didn't pursue it, I knew that Friday would be the night. So I, I can't say, I, if anybody knows any time that's going on, uh, related graduation, I've just opened that one as well.
Nothing under age?
Not, oh, age?
Nothing under age.
Oh, yeah, no, nothing.
Okay, I, I guess I'm a public safety disaster preparation committee, and I guess we'll have the discussion about the vehicles. Myself and Frank met down there and had a battle with Richard and Sco, and we figured we had the problem solved until just now, while he contacted you, what, last week, Richard? With, with the vehicle, the police car? Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, I spoke with him in his house, I'm a.
When me and Frank left the meeting, they were in agreement, we were gonna buy a pickup truck with the police car money, and we split between town sergeant's office and Stefan. Well, now they're both pissed off because they feel the hundred and ninety thousand dollars in that account is their money, not the town's.
And they also, they also said that they wanted to use that money to put in the.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollar radio system.
Communication system, now, earlier in the meeting, Richard had said that he wants to communicate with the state police, but the state police do not wanna communicate with him. But then later on in the discussion, he said, well, we need that money to put the communication system in. So we got kind of mixed messages on that. So they didn't, they were concerned about the SUV and everything that was gonna have to come out of it if Stefan was to take possession of that. And we explained to them, we thought they'd be happy if we gave, we were going to provide them with a new vehicle. And then there was also a misconception that Stefan was gonna use the vehicle for personal use and drive home in East Greenwich. And we told them, no, that's not gonna happen, it's either gonna be parked at the town hall or parked at the rescue barn. And if they felt that they needed to use it, because they were doing the detail and they had a lot of cones, if they had to set up the detail, then it would be available for them to use, and it would probably be to their benefit. So when we first went in, they were a little defensive and it was a little contentious, and then when we left, they were both happy and agreed, and agreed that they were gonna go and they were gonna bid speck it out for us, and now evidently it, it changed their minds, so, I don't know. And they wanted to know why I was there. They were kind of insulted that I was there. Dan diplomatically explained to them that if I'm out of town, Frank has a good relationship with Stefan, he's gonna also attend the emergency management seminar URI on the nineteenth of June, which I am. So I was just there to help, be informed, I wasn't there to try and step in the turf. I don't know if that was an aid or not.
So I guess our next step is, we go online to that, was it MHQ?
Yes.
And I guess.
You can, I pulled it up right on my phone, right when we were there.
Well, I guess if you get a chance with Stefan, you have to sit down and spec a vehicle.
Yes.
And then put it out for bid, or, no, they're on the statewide business.
That's correct. And they're about thirty percent cheaper than if you were to go into a dealership and buy a vehicle at their invoice, so it's.
Just, just pickup trucks were six to eight thousand dollars cheaper than a dealer.
Right, twenty-five grand?
Oh, I saw the prices, I was shocked.
Depends on whether you buy four by two or four by four.
Very basic.
But it was significantly less money than even if you were to go in as a person off the street and ask them for insurance. And the only other expense that would be is we'd have to have it lettered to say emergency services. So that way, the constables or Richard or Sco would have that vehicle at their, at their availability also.
And they were in agreement with that, too, emergency services, and since in the last week and a half, two weeks, they don't want nothing to do with it, because you're taking their money.
When I talked to Richard, he wasn't happy. And I, I said, oh, I thought you guys were in agreement, I heard you guys were in agreement with it, and it was no problem. Went out, and he just went off, so.
When me and Frank left that meeting, they were both in agreement with it, thought it was a great idea.
Somebody talked him out of it.
Go.
Maybe not.
We'll have to put in a call to Stefan, Frank, and order a vehicle.
Okay. Well, we impressed upon them. I don't know where they got, I don't know where they got the notion that this was gonna be Stefan's personal vehicle, because it wasn't mine to be, and I don't know how they got that intention.
And then they were mad because we were gonna park it in the vehicle, so. And then they were mad because we were gonna park it in the ambulance, don't you believe that? The reason we hoped we would park it there was because there's people there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
When we walked in, it had, we had, we were faced with a three-foot chop. When we left, it was smooth as glass. Now I guess we're back to a three-foot chop again, I don't know.
I, I would say, let's just keep the price together, and back to the next meeting with the price from the council.
Get some figures. It's a shame that, um, you know, Stefan has used his vehicle, I don't think. But, anyway.
I don't know how Stefan's vehicle makes it down the road.
Gets inspection sick.
I don't know how he gets inspected.
I tell you what, I hope the state police don't find out.
Maria, he, he was the one that used the majority of the mileage figures last year, too, right?
He, he did. He averages a little two thousand every year.
Like I said, he said he's got like three hundred thousand miles on his Toyota, so, I mean...
What's that?
She said the last she heard, he was applying for a grant for a vehicle.
Well, that's what he said, but he doesn't know that's gonna, he told me that on the phone, so... We'll, we'll do that, we'll get some pricing together, come to the next council meeting, and maybe Scoop, Richard will calm down by then. We'll have to send Maria over there to straighten them out. Okay, uh, I forgot what next. Uh, Royal Land Preservation Trust Committee, uh, meeting next Wednesday. I guess they were in the parade, I watched it on video when I was in Vermont, so, and, uh, I haven't been able to meet with them this month because we've been having meetings the same month. Okay, Library Liaison Report, Kevin is not here, anybody has anything to add? North Kingston Preserve and Royal Greens Project, Ken, I don't have that many to add. Ken Finley, Town Council Assistance Report.
We've been working on the resolutions for Tuesday, Jim, Peter, Maria, myself, we're all set, and then, um, I think it looks good.
Next Tuesday? Why do I always think it's Wednesday? Uh, Solicitors Report.
This is really only one matter that I think I need to address with the council, and that's the state police security matter. You wanna do that in executive session, or I can discuss it with you now, whenever you prefer.
Right.
Why don't I discuss it, okay. You, you all probably saw the communication we got from Mr. Di Biase in response to my letter to, uh, town council's letter through me to, to the Colonel. Obviously, he's proceeding as though no resolution is in law, and then he indicated that he was going to proceed with the budget, which would presumably not include about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever his of state reimbursement to the town as a result of their bill. There's a position, there's a section in the law concerning such invoices to towns that says that state invoices should be counterbalanced by any invoice that is presented to the state by the town that's outstanding. So, um, one thing that the town could do is present, uh, Mr. Di Biase with a bill based upon the calculations that our treasurer has made concerning the loss of tax-based revenue as a result of the extraordinary amount of state property that's in the town of Exor. We can also take the position that a request for payment for coverage in the town is a state mandate. If what they're, if what they're doing is saying that we must have police officers stationed in the town, and it's gonna cost two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, then a very good argument can be made that that's a state mandate under the definition. And that the town should be reimbursed for it, so present the bill now. Because it provides an argument that, that any bill to us would be offset by. And as I said to Dan, while someone might say that our bill is speculative because we don't have legislation in favor of it, I don't think it's any more speculative than the bill that you've received from the state police indicating their calculations, particularly since they haven't backed it up with specifics concerning the various runs. We know that a large percentage of that must be on the state highways and for other things that would be incidental and done for any other town as a part of the typical state police duties. So there's home rule issues, there's the like, and that's one option that we could do. That is present them with an invoice to counter the invoice that they presented to us.
Do you want me to interest the suggestion you gave me that I follow up with now, or is that you suggest?
Sure, I think you...
So Jim suggested that, seeing that the town council president, vice president, met with the director of administration, and diplomatically asked him for a breakdown of the alleged seven thousand, seven thousand, four thousand, seven thousand, right? Seven thousand...
Two thousand.
Thousands of calls in municipality since two thousand fourteen, which somebody from the command staff informed Andy Kettleman that it would take some time to do that. I filed the open request, open records request with the state police last week. How close we are to the ten days, I don't recall. But I was hoping to have an answer by the time the Senate Finance Committee has the meeting, which is actually tomorrow night. So Dan and I are gonna testify at that hearing, and I will inform them that I filed the open records request. We also have the, our state rep, who had a meeting with the speaker and expressed our concerns through him, the speaker. Evidently, he received not a yes or no, but he did receive a positive response from the speaker with regards to the dilemma we are in. So we are approaching this from several angles.
Well, what they did, Cal, is they changed the language. The budget is a bill. But they changed the language in this one paragraph to where they can take our money. We're trying to get the paragraph changed back to what it used to be. Because after meeting with that director of administration, he's just arrogant, and he's telling me your bills go nowhere, you're not getting any pilot money, blah, blah, blah. And that's when I called Frank, and I said, the House controls the money. Let's just go see that.
Do what you can do, I guess.
We got a very good response from House Finance. Chairman Agnew was very receptive.
The whole, the whole House Finance Committee was receptive, so... Frank, who is the general, Central Falls, in the tuck?
Lawson, Representative Lawson.
He told us that we can state statutes. Okay, so we're good there, Frank?
Yes.
All right. Uh, bill sheets.
I'm making a motion to accomplish bill sheet data.
Approve.
Five thirty.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Tax assessment abatements, any?
No.
No.
Not this one.
Okay. Tax collector remittance in abatements? None?
They aren't, no.
It's the rock.
They're, 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 she's cleaning, cleaning up all the...
Don't accept them?
Yeah.
Unless you want me to read it into the record or let it right up to find it.
I have it here, but I, I don't know, Lynn, you, you hear that it's right into the record, you know? Do you usually do that?
Yeah, just put it into the record.
Well, um...
In the, in the, in the, in the amount, though? I have the figures, do you want that?
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Do you need the figures?
I got it, yeah.
I got it.
A move to approve abatements in the total of six thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-four cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I make a motion to approve the remittance from the tax collector in the amount of six thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second.
And?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Other administrative issues, none? Communications, you know, just look at them, we haven't even pulled any of them. Number four, number four, Calvin.
I didn't say four. I said eighteen, eighteen and thirty-four.
Oh, eight, number eight.
Well, eight, eight is the one about Whispering Mines, the lady wants to meet with us about traffic on Mail Road. That's number eight, and I would...
Kevin had sent her an email back saying we would be discussing it at this meeting.
Oh, well, here's my, here's my suggestion. I don't know if, it doesn't say that Steve's been communicated with. Let's, let's forward this to Steve, ask him if he has any thoughts about signage or anything. So I, I would move that we forward.
Is that the, is that the rock?
I'm sorry, June, no.
No, 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 no.
That's the end, the rock is at the end.
This is the lady I'm here for complaining about people speeding down Mail Road.
So a move that we forward this to Steve and ask if he has any suggestions regarding signage. So, you know, do something, I mean, use it on, and then there's also a shitty rock cleanup.
If you want.
Did I, yeah, I did make that.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number ten, Cal.
Yeah, right here, this is about a, a letter being requested for the Wood, uh, Parka Tuck Wild and Scenic River Study Commission, and here is the, the blanket, what do you call it, template. And I move that we would send this letter to this, this Rivers, Scenic Rivers Study Committee indicating that they endorse their stewardship plan. Try to get a hold of this communication. We'd have to do anything, cause they, they just says, they've got a plan, and we're supporting their plan. So I would move that we would send this letter.
Send the letter to?
No, it's, it's, you'll see it here, Lynn, it's under communication number ten. It suggests either a resolution or a letter. I thought a letter would be simpler. So I'm moving that we send a letter.
Sounds good.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right here. Oh, just can we forward this to, uh, this is the one about having a liaison on a representative of summer program. Can we just send, forward this to Christine, please, to see if she might have anyone in mind or can do anything with it.
Yes.
So I have to make a motion, I would forward this communication number eighteen to Christine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thirty-four.
Well, and then you have thirty-one.
Well, I was going by Calvin.
No, it's all right, it's okay.
I, I write them down.
Twenty-four also.
Well, thirty-four, thirty-four is Mrs. Price's reimbursement.
Oh, you're going to the, okay.
Yeah, you can get it out, so...
Well, I'm, I, I see, Lynn, that this, that Steve was copied, and I wonder if this needs to go to the trust, I don't know, for insurance? Have you spoken to Steve about this?
He fixed the rock, um, you wanna send that to the trust insurance?
Well, I don't know, she, she's, she's asking for...
So you want me to make it a claim with the insurance company?
What do you think? I think she's written to it.
Probably a thousand dollar deductible, Maria?
Yeah.
Oh, twenty-five hundred, so the town paid it.
So, yeah, so we would, so now it's...
How much is the bill?
Eight thirty-three.
Eight hundred thirty-three dollars.
Yeah, it's, it'll be, not by the deductible.
Yeah, okay, so it won't go anywhere.
Right.
So what recommend, would you recommend what fund that would come out of, if we could reimburse Miss Price for her damages?
Normally, the deductibles come out of the department which caused the issue, so it might come out of DPW.
Well, just to follow up, and again, I know it's late, we might have to finish this, but Lynn, you said he fixed the rock?
I guess he moved it, or...
I have a note from Steve.
Do you?
Yeah.
Would you please?
Said that, correcting Mrs. Price's letter, she said, he said that the road had not been widened, and the last time it was paved was nineteen ninety-eight, it was stone sealed twice since, and the stone has been drilled, broken and removed. And Miss Price had called me and talked to me, and I went up to him, looked at it, and I made, made a mark with a stick, pink, for Stephen going to look at it, I sent him the pictures, so, just so you know that.
But it's been in place then for quite a long time.
It's been in place for a long time, and they had moved it, so, um, they, they, I guess they recognized it was kinda dangerous, and they, they took it out, so... That's what, that's what I'm saying.
They took it out after she hit it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ah, so...
Well, I kinda like it, and it's like it shouldn't have been there.
It shouldn't have been there, yeah.
I mean, eight hundred thirty-three dollars is...
I assume it's just as well as I sent it, this is good.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does Maria need to know where it's coming?
Is she on them?
Maria.
Maria, where do we take it from?
Um, I think it's DPW.
Now they're gonna be bad at me.
What are you doing, taking it out of who, Richard's?
No, no, don't take it anymore, it's a police car.
No, 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 no.
Okay. Frank, we got thirty-one and thirty-two with you.
Right, so we already addressed under town reports, Ray talked about Mort retiring, and, uh, on top of that, I had a question as to whether or not the town or DPW, and I mentioned it briefly to Lynn, and I didn't know if there was any more input or developments on, gonna have a, there's another employee that's retiring as well, right? Richard?
Whoa, he's not gonna run again.
Right, so I didn't know if the council wanted to, whether I need to put in a motion of appropriate funds to have a retirement body separately or together, or...
Richard would, so he doesn't go out at night.
Well, it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be night. It could be a daytime thing like we do with the Christmas party.
Well, Richard's here till, Richard's here till November, so...
Mort's worked, Mort's worked for the DPW, what, over thirty years, right?
Yeah, I think he said he's leaving the twenty-ninth.
So is that something that you wanna consider, thanking it for its service, and just have a small little thing advocated?
Get together, town, all of them.
Sorry, no, it's something to do with the...
Oh. Any thoughts?
That's a good thought, I mean, um...
But, but I'd wait, yeah, I'd wait a little bit, and pick a flash of that camera or something, and when he gets closer, the ones count, actually, you know? Doesn't that make sense?
That's Richard, yeah.
Well, for Richard, speaking of Richard not running, is what makes sense.
Well, yeah, it was a discussion as to whether or not we have a party for both of them, or singularly, or when to have it, you know? Pass the hat, you know?
Do them separate, do them separately.
I mean, here's, here's my thought, one guy's work, faulted, you know, twenty, what is it?
Thirty years.
Yeah, but how many, five days a week, you know, that kind of thing, try about it, more.
Right.
And I don't know if the town should, I mean, certainly the department oughta maybe think of something, I mean, if you wanna do something as a town, you can, but...
Will we ask Steve, will we put a...
I wouldn't do it with Richard, I think it's two different things, I'd do something.
Yeah, that's fine.
A lunch for Richard or something, you know?
I figured you could do a, a, a lunch at the town hall for Mort, too, and invite any of the employees or the DPW guys, and come up for an hour and...
Mort's family.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine, yeah, that's fine. Sure.
Well, that's another story. W Mason get a racket chair? That's a joke.
All right, Frank, thirty-two, the letter from...
What, well, before we move on, I just, a question. Did we make a motion to post the position from Mort at all? We did make that motion.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, just make sure.
That was four hours ago, Frank.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
You're right.
That's right, you're right.
Okay, why don't we follow up, I'm going to follow up, Frank, on what you said. Why don't we ask, suggest that Lynn have a, sorry Lynn, but something the last week of June, someday, because he's leaving. I think he has a year, isn't he? So, what about that last, if you could think of what?
The Friday of that week or something.
Yeah, and plan a little luncheon thing. Would you do that? How's that like the last week of June?
Right. At town hall.
Yeah. Do you want, uh, we could just tell you if you want to move or if you do. I talked to you, I don't know. We'll just suggest it.
So...
If we just suggest it, you want to do it. But we, Lynn, go ahead and see what Ray should think.
All right, so I make a motion to allow Adam Clark to, twenty-ninth, that is actually a Friday anyway.
Okay.
So...
Anytime that week, you know?
Right.
Second, isn't it?
Motion for the clerk to...
Motion for the clerk to help...
Small luncheon.
Set up a luncheon and, and thank you for more service to the town.
Second.
Invite, put a, put a memo out that all employees are invited. And then, I don't know, in the past, did we do this type of thing? Is it RSCP, so we know how much food to buy, or how do you do that?
You guess to me.
You just guess to me?
Yeah, like I do at my Christmas party.
Okay.
If she does it on a Wednesday or Thursday, then the ladies in the town hall will have to pull up the election to the end of the week.
That's true.
You know what I'm saying? So, you know what I mean? If you did it in the middle of the week, you ladies would have to pull up the election.
All right, so Wednesday would be the twenty-seventh?
It's just a thought of, of Lynn. I don't know if that would work, but...
Well, check it out. Number thirty.
Wake up, Jim. Uh, thirty-two, Frank.
So, we all got the communication from Miss Swindlehurst. Her letter was rather lengthy, but the end of it, she posed rhetorical, or a couple of rhetorical questions. Reposing if there are specific concerns, we would be more logical to openly state the potential issue, investigate it and remedy that problem, but there is one. Issues like fees for adoption is a municipal issue that can be decided without the use of the committee. And the last council meeting, I believe it was a motion, it was seconded, and it was unanimous to essentially end the study committee and ask them for a report that they have, which I don't believe, you've seen the report, right?
No.
You make a motion and it wasn't voted on?
I'm going to add it.
What? It's still not ready?
Last time we met, we gave the director of draft, mark up. We wanted the advisors and the committee members to mark it up. And that's the last time we met. So, we had, we didn't have a forum two months ago, and I haven't heard anything from John Hughes at all. So, I don't know why that stings me now.
Lynn, reach out to him. Should we reach out to him being a raise on or do you want me to call him?
No, I can call him.
Tell him that we want the, that they've had enough time where they would get the drafts back from all the committee members.
Well, he wanted to, I mean, discuss everything that's just drafted. It's going on for a while now, so. I'll, I'll give him a call. I'll find out what's up. Okay, last one. Ray, number twenty-four.
Real quick, Steve wanted me to address the request for the customer install the conduible box and shoulder roll in Summit Road. Steve had said he's going to review it, Stefan, the chief of limits, and spec all work on that, just all. Just a few other things.
Lynn, anything else?
Do we have any in executive session?
Yeah.
Do we? Uh, we can do a jury. Back in. All in favor?
Aye.
Eleven oh five. I need to stand up.
Five minutes, Congressman. Torture continues tonight.
Lynn, you got your little, you got your little, little things to sign over there.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm just looking up that interval show.
I know. I didn't, I didn't remember what we did there.
Oh, you're leaving us, Jim?
This one's, these two are just the hands. And then it's a finding now. What do I do with this?
That's the, uh, goodnight, everyone.
Oh, yes, thank you.
That's the whole package.
Goodnight, Jim.
Night, Jim.
Night, Jim.